A pleasant good evening to each and everyone joining us here this evening. Pleasant good evening to each and everyone. Before we get into our program this evening, we ask God’s blessings upon this session. This evening, dear Lord, we come before you this evening asking for your blessings upon this session, asking that you guide our thoughts, our lips, whatever we do and say this afternoon, this evening will be in honor and glory of your name. We ask that you continue to look down upon this island and lay your healing hands upon those who are currently afflicted with the COVID-19 virus. We ask that you protect their families and all the health workers and others who are charged with the responsibility of keeping this island safe. These things we ask before your name. Amen. Good evening. I would like to acknowledge the presence of our retired High Court Judge, Justice Don Mitchell. He has been faithful with us from the outset. We have a number of members of the clergy in the audience here with us this evening, so we say good evening to them. Our listeners via Radio Angola and our viewers on gov.ai in Angola and Lloyd’s Live. I begin, as I always begin, with the opening stanza of our national song. “God bless Angola, nurture and keep her. Noble and beauteous, she stands midst the sea. O land of the happy, a haven we’ll make thee; our lives and love we give unto thee.” Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to this, the seventh and final in the series of town hall meetings that the Ministry of Home Affairs is organizing to solicit the views of the general public on constitutional reform. I would like to state here, as I’ve stated so many times before, that in the APM 2020 Elections Campaign Manifesto, by way of our vision statement we stated earlier that the Angola Progressive Movement APM understands that enhancing the foundation of a great society means investing more in its people and empowering them to take ownership of their own destiny. Charting our own destiny means that we have the right to self-determination as the United Nations Charter mandates, and consequently, as a people, we will have to reach a consensus on a roadmap on how this can be achieved. After being on the road, so to speak, soliciting the views of the general public, tonight we bring these series of town hall meetings to our close here in District 3, Valley North, at the Rodney MacArthur Way Auditorium. And for those making their way to this session, please enter from the eastern door. We are indeed grateful for all the comments and views shared over the past weeks. I wish to point out that we will not all agree on all the matters under discussion. However, I do hope that we can agree that there is need to move ahead with reforming the Constitution. Ultimately, the hope is that what we present to the United Kingdom Government for discussions represents the views and will of the people of Angola. As I close all these public consultations, I take pleasure this evening in sharing with you the full text of a message I received this afternoon from Miss Ivy Plank, a woman who has been fearless in speaking out on national issues over the years. Miss Plank cannot join us, has not been able to join us for these various sessions, but she has indicated that she listens keenly to every session. I now read from her message. “Here are my views on the Constitution for Angola, which I would like for you to read for me at this evening’s consultation. I realize that the Constitution for Angola at this time is set in a colonial context because a colony is a colony, whatever euphemism it goes by. I hear much anger and pain expressed over the dictatorial powers of the governor in the present constitution. We need to remember, however, that Angola chose a backward step of remaining a colony and joyfully chose direct rule from England, the very colonial power that was responsible for the deplorable condition it was in. Sincits, Nevis, and Angola formed a single colony which was controlled by England with the central government located in Sincits. The only reason it was chosen was that of the three islands, Sincits was the only one with the soil, rain, and sloping lowlands suitable for growing sugarcane, which England used to build up its wealth. England, not Mr. Bradshaw, was responsible for the three-island colony. In my reading of colonial history, I never came across a colony that ruled itself or any part of it. It is ruled by an imperial power. The only time Mr. Bradshaw could have held, could have been held responsible for conditions in Angola was after 1967, when the colony’s status changed to statehood, which brought internal self-government. Angola broke away at that time, venting its justifiable anger on Mr. Bradshaw rather than on England. Here is my contribution to the public consultation. One. I think the draft constitution that arose out of the exhaustive public consultations held by the committee chaired by Mr. Don Mitchell QC should be retained. To that can be added the amendments made by Her Majesty’s Government and the points representing the consensus from this round of public consultation, whether those views were expressed by actual attendees at the consultations or through other means. Two. I think the present number of seats should be retained; to increase them would incur an unnecessary financial burden. Three. I think the present number of constituencies should be retained, but the boundaries should be redrawn to equalize the number of voters in each constituency as much as possible. The voter’s list can be used to do this. Four. I think there is a need for us to reexamine the conventional attitude to same-sex marriage, which is based on our interpretations of biblical passages with total disregard for the sociological context. At the time those texts were written, the writers did not have the knowledge of the human body that we have now. For example, Bible writers, like their societies that produced them, considered all bodily discharges unclean. So a menstruating woman was considered unclean and had to remain in total isolation until her period was finished. Today, because of our knowledge, we know that the menstrual cycle is part of a woman’s reproductive system. Imagine what would happen if we still believed that a menstruating woman was unclean and therefore must be completely isolated. Society could not function. The concept of male and female introduced in Genesis was meant to show how human beings were to multiply and replenish the earth, in other words, have children and populate the earth. “For this cause shall a man leave his father and his mother and shall cleave to his wife,” is often used as a prescription for marriage, that is, between a man and a woman. However, textual critics in biblical studies, not the typical Bible study in church, but scholars who studied the texts in the original language in which they were written, tell us that these words were not part of the original text, but a commentary put there by a translator. This was called a gloss. The knowledge available today shows that the binary male-female gender distinction is not as clear-cut as we think it is. The case of the South African Olympic champion runner, Kasa Semenya, better known as Semenya, is a good illustration of the complexity of gender identification. She was born utterly female, was raised as a girl, saw herself as a girl, and legally classified as a female. But when she reached puberty, she began looking more and more like a man. Controversy over her gender started when she entered the Olympics in 2009 as a competitor in the 800-meter track and field female championships and dwarfed her competitors’ performance. Her build-and-aspiring performance caused her fellow competitors, sports officials, and journalists to put her under brutal scrutiny. They questioned whether she was a man or a woman. Sports officials ordered gender verification tests. The controversy over her gender raged throughout her Olympic career. Sports governing bodies ordered surgery to see if she was male or female. The surgery revealed that she had the male XY chromosome, testes, and unusually high levels of testosterone, far exceeding the levels in a female. Those bodies ordered her to take testosterone-reducing medication or do surgery to move her testes and try to ban her from competing as a female athlete. Her athletic story is one long history of court battle after court battle to prevent her from being forced to take medication, do surgery, or compete as a man. Experts who testified in her court cases stated that human beings show a wide spectrum between the categories of male and female genders. Semenya’s case dominated the headlines, but she was by no means the lone case among female Olympic athletes. If gender is as complex as it can be, I suspect sexual orientation is also as complex, for hormones are controlling factors in both. We do not get to choose the hormones we are born with and have no control over the timing of their release as we develop. We are therefore to be cautious about condemning those who do not conform to our stereotypes of gender and sexual orientation. Ivy Plank, October 14, 2021. I’d like to thank her for sharing that information with us today. I would like to express my gratitude to the Department of Information Technology Dykes and Mr. Gilbert Fleming of Titanium Sounds and his assistant, Venetia, and in Angola for able-so providing audio, visual, and streaming for all the meetings held over the past weeks. I also want to acknowledge the able and valuable assistance being provided by my able and capable prominent secretary, Dr. Aidan Harrigan, and other technical staff at the Ministry of Home Affairs in organizing and facilitating all of these sessions. With all the above having now been said, I now invite Permanent Secretary Home Affairs Dr. Aidan Harrigan to present on Angola’s constitutional evolution and the key changes under consideration for this round of constitutional reform. Following that, the floor and our online platform will be open to accept your questions and comments. Thank you, Dr. Harrigan.
Thank you, Minister Hodge, and good evening to one and all those of you here in the auditorium and those of you listening via social media. So we will start with the United Nations Charter. And it states that all peoples have the right to self-determination. By virtue of that right, they freely determine their political status and freely determine their economic, social, and cultural development. The United Nations, by way of UN Resolution 66-1 of 1946, established a list of non-self-governing territories. The UN further by Resolution 1541, Roman Rule XV, of 1960, identified that self-determination is attained through three modes, namely independence, free association, and integration. The UN in 1961 established the Special Committee on Decolonization, so-called Committee of 24. The United Kingdom Government, as well as other administering powers, are obligated to report to the UN on an annual basis on progress with their territories, the non-self-governing territories, attaining self-determination. The UN declared the first international decade on decolonization to last from 1991 to 2000, with the intention that by the end of that decade, all the non-self-governing territories would have attained self-determination. However, that has not been realized, and there have been a number of subsequent international decades on decolonization, and we are currently in the one that runs from 2021 to 2030. Angola is one of 70 non-self-governing territories that the UN monitors. So, terms of modes of self-determination, independence. Independence, a country gains independence if it has its own government and is not ruled by any other state or country. Example, those former colonies in the Caribbean, such as Jamaica, English, British colonies in the Caribbean, such as Jamaica, Barbados, and Trinidad. Free association. Free association is defined as being, it shall be the result of a free and voluntary choice by the peoples of the territory concerned, expressed through informed and democratic processes, and should permit the right to determine the internal constitution without outside interference. Example, Puerto Rico and its relationship with the United States of America. Integration is defined as being on the basis of complete equality between the people of the former territory and the country into which it is being integrated. Example, Martinique and Guadeloupe and their relationship with France. Taking a sweep through Angola’s history, Angola was established as a British colony in 1650 and initially administered through Antigua. In 1825, however, administrative control was switched to Sincits. In 1967, following the collapse of the Westernist Federation, the UK established the associated state of Sincits, Nevis, Angola, and its constitution represented what could be called a semi-independent status because it provided for full internal self-government, with the UK retaining responsibility for external defense and foreign affairs. However, Angulians, given a long history of neglect and the various arrangements, were not happy with that most recent arrangement and decided to break away. So we know, all of us would know, for example, Angola Day, which we celebrate to this day, May 30th. The famous statehood Queen Show, which was interrupted, the ejection of the Sincits policemen who were stationed here, they were sent back to Sincits, and so on. And then, on July 11, 1967, a referendum was held, sorry, by, I think by a claim right not far from us here, at Webster’s Park, what is now Webster’s Park, but used to be called Boroughs Park. And the folks decided that Angola should secede from the tri-state, and a constitution which was formulated by Harvard Law Professor Roger Fisher was adopted. There was a second referendum in February 6, 1969, and that resulted in a unilateral declaration of independence. And the Constitution was adopted, the Constitution adopted was formulated by Jack Holcomb. Following that, the UK Government dispatched British troops to Angola. And on March 1969, they landed, and direct rule was established by Britain and formally by Eddick through the Angola Act of 1971. Following that, in 1976, there was another constitution introduced, and with this, Angola Ministerial Government was introduced in Angola. Prior to that, Angola was governed by what you call a council, an island council. Notwithstanding Angola’s separation, formally, legally, it was still actually part of the tri-state. And in 1980, the Angola Act was passed, and that empowered the UK to allow for the separation of Angola from Sincits, Nevis, Angola. And that was done on December 19, 1980, which is a day that we still celebrate in the form of a holiday. The Constitution currently in effect is the Constitutional Order of 1982. It was amended in 1990, and one of the provisions was to allow for the position of leader of the opposition. And it was not until a couple years ago, 2019, that there were further amendments, which we will get into in a bit. Okay, so constitutional reform, what were the main impulses behind it? In 1989, the UK Government published a new policy on the territories, which was called the Partnership for Progress and Prosperity. One of the results of that was that territories which were formerly called dependent territories were renamed overseas territories. The UK Government also encouraged the territories to undertake constitutional change and that they should establish constitutional review commissions or committees to facilitate the process. The UK was clear to indicate that for those territories that wished to become independent, they could do so, once it was the express wish of the majority of the population in the territory. However, it ruled out free association with the UK or integration with the UK. So in Angola, in 2001, a constitutional committee was established and met, had a number of consultations, tried various means of encouraging dialogue, and however, no formal recommendations were made, although speeches and transcripts of meetings were subsequently published. That same committee would have been responsible for, with the consent of the UK and the UN, holding in 2003, a UN decolonization seminar here in Angola. And a statement was read from the UN Secretary-General at the time, which he stated, which he stated that achieving self-government for the peoples of the world has been one of the cardinal goals of the United Nations since its inception. In 2006, another constitutional committee was established and held extensive consultations and concluded its work within six months. In 2015, however, nothing was done with the work that was completed, and it was not until 2015 until another constitutional committee was established. And it met over the period 2015 to 2017, tabled a report, and also tabled a draft constitution. So, before we get into the elements of the 2017 Constitution, we can ask the question of what were the driving forces behind the recommendations made? And the committee would have indicated that, based on the consultations which they had and the various public meetings, town hall meetings, and so on, that the public would have expressed the view that they felt that there was a lack of democracy in the existing constitution, what some people refer to as a democratic deficit. And also that they felt that there was a need to improve the standards of public life. And so, based on that, the committee would have made recommendations to address those issues. So looking at the Constitution, if you take the preamble, and the preamble is longer than, I just picked out a few paragraphs there, the preamble is longer than what, is longer than those three paragraphs, but I thought these were important to pull out. So it says, “Whereas the people of the territory of Angola have over centuries evolved with distinct cultural identity and will, which is the essence of an Angulian, and acknowledging that the society of Angola is based on certain moral, spiritual, and democratic values, including the belief in God, the inherent dignity of the human person, the inalienable right of the freedom of the individual, and respect for the fundamental rights and freedoms and the rule of law. And further, affirming that the people of Angola generally have expressed a desire to become a self-governing people and to exercise the highest degree of control over the affairs of their country at this stage of its development.” If we look at Angola status, um, part nine of the draft constitution, it provides um for Angola Status Committee. And um there are a number of criteria under which persons can qualify for belonging status or now is now referred to as Angola status. And um it picked out a couple of those. One, um, a person can, who has resided in Angola for a continuous period of of um at least fifteen years is eligible to be considered for grant of Angola status. Two, um, a person who has been married to an Angulian for at least five years. So would have picked those out because there's been this, you know, some debate of about our well of view put that Angola, there's needs for us to increase the population. Angola's population has pretty much been at its current level for a number of years. Twelve thousand, sometime it would have gone up in the during the 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 height of the boom in the development in the late um two thousands. Well, two thousand, two thousand and three to seven, thereabouts, there was a lot of um migration in terms of labor. So I think it went up to around fifteen thousand, but it's back down to maybe thirteen thousand. So um, we're not, we're not, we're not growing that much. And and there's a question of what, what is a sustainable, a population that renders itself to a sustainable economy? And so those are avenues through which you can grow the population. Representation in the House of Assembly, if you look at part six. Currently, there's provision for um not less than eleven members. And the proposal is that that should be increased to thirteen. So backing up a bit, as I would have mentioned, the draft was submitted in twenty seventeen. And the administration of the day, the United Front Government would have pulled out a few elements and submitted them to the UK government for um for amendment, and that was approved and amendment was done in, I think it was May twenty nine, twenty nineteen. So what happened, one of the elements that was approved is to allow for um election to the House of Assembly by by on the basis of island-wide elections. So there are four um, four members can be elected on that basis. And the election, general elections that were held in in the in was it July last year, July twenty twenty, twenty twenty, um, that was done. Of course, we know that there's also elections on the basis of district representation. And there's currently seven, seventy electoral districts. And there's a recommendation that um that could be increased to nine districts. So this can, um, in terms of representation and the statement that was um correspondence that was read out earlier by Minister Haj made reference to to these. So the debates on how this should go, I think everybody agrees that the current, in terms of the current seven electoral districts, that the distribution is not, is not um, is is quite skewed. So we have rather small districts like District Two, Sandy Hill, and District Seven, Western, compared to very large districts such as District Three, Valenart, District Four, Valley South, and District, that would be six, I think, six, um, Roadnaught. And so the question is, should should um increase the number of districts to nine? And 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 make the distribution across those nine districts? Or should you keep seven, the number of districts to seven? But again, um, have a more equitable distribution. Whatever is is, so a decision would have to be made or um, which way you go. But keeping in 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 accordance with good practice, this should be done, recommendations should be done by a district boundaries commission, which the constitution allows for and and go from there. Another aspect of representation has been the question of whether the two ex-official members in the House of Assembly, the persons of the Attorney General and the Deputy Governor, whether they should have a vote. And this um draft constitution recommends that that they should not have a vote. And as we have been saying, you know, that issue came to fore earlier this year with the passage of the GST bill when it, the GST bill was was put over the line by virtue of those two ex-official members voting. And the view, a viewpoint expressed by many people is that um legislation of such nature really ought to be um voted on by by people who answer to the to the electorate. And so if the electorate disagrees or agrees, then and the subsequent election, they can vote as they see fit. So why is it important to to have, um, you know, um, a a good balance in terms of representation in the House? Current, the way and and the situation Angola has been for the most part is that when you have the the executive council, typically the members who form executive council, when they go to the House of Assembly, if they stick together, it means that it's a fit, a complete, that the government, that whatever legislation is being debated will pass. And so that is term a rubber stamp. And and in, it's a feature of um democratic principles that you should have separation of the different um vehicles of government. So the executive and the legislative and the judicial. So as I said, it's it's, that is something that would need to be um decided on in terms of how um we want to go forward in Angola in terms of representation in the House of Assembly. So one that um I've put in here a new slide, because um that is this question of referendums have, refer to have, has come up. Um, and the, in other words, that if there's strong views on a particular issue, does the population have a means to affect the process outside of the elections? And so by providing for referendums, it's possible to do that. So what is proposed in the draft constitution is as follows. And that comes under section sixty six. And it said, there shall be presented to the Cabinet, a petition signed by not less than twenty-five percent of persons registered as voters in accordance with section six sixty nine. The Cabinet shall settle the wording of a referendum question or questions within a reasonable time period as prescribed by law. And then the Cabinet shall determine the date of the referendum, when the referendum will be held. And then, subject to to the constitution, a referendum on this section shall be binding on the government of Angola and Assembly if ascended to by more than fifty percent of the persons voting in the referendum. So I I think that is a example of how, you know, the democratic democracy can be increased. Looking at powers of procedure in the House of Assembly, um, in terms of the speaker. So the speaker, basically the speaker is usually the first session after a general election when the assembly meets or um in other circumstances when when the when the 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 office of the speaker becomes vacant, unfortunately. Say, for example, through the death of of a sitting speaker, which has has happened here in Angola before, um, then a speaker, a new speaker has to be elected. And typically, well, not typically, what is provided for is that um once a person qualifies and once they are not members of the Cabinet, they are eligible to be considered. And again, um, since the government side would have the majority of 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 um of of uh seats in the House of Assembly, our positions, then then normally the government nominee um is selected. There's some, is a viewpoint that we should get away from this and that there should be some vehicle where where a person who is viewed to be non-aligned to who is not aligned to any party in in the representative House of Assembly, that person should be, the speaker should be selected on that basis. Voting, so as we saw with the GST bill, it it came very close. It was a matter of two persons, um, maybe one. But there are, there are circumstances where it could be a tie. And in the case of, if there's a tie in terms of a vote of a on a bill, then there's provision for the speaker to have a cast and vote. And just welcome in folks who have been coming in. As we have been going along, it's good to see the turnout. The next section look at, we'll look at is relates to improving standards in public life. And one aspect is the question of campaign finance. We often hear that, if those of you who follow in the US politics, for example, it's a big issue, it's an issue in the Caribbean to everywhere you go. Because um basically you want to have in equal level playing field. And 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 so that you don't want um one side or person or persons benefiting from a, a, you know, substantial donations which could skew the outcome. Because if you have finance, you could, all the things that go with elections, you can, you can finance those. And then also, there's the, there is the fear that once you open up this system to um such unregulated campaign finance, it could then leave politicians or the system open to to undue influence. In other words, folks haven't contributed significantly for to a campaign could later on come and say, well, it's now it's time to, it's now time to pay me back in terms of whatever, in terms of laws passed or things approved. So campaign finance, the whole regulation of that and providing for transparency is is very important. There's also the question of what is called institutions for good governance and and individuals who to ensure good governance. And so how this is proposed to be addressed is by having a number of commissions. There are already some some commissions in place, like the Public Service Commission, Police Service Commission, Angola Status Commission, and so on. However, um, there's a proposal to have some new ones. For example, Appointment Commission, which would deal, for example, with appointments to um boards, you know, the statutory bodies, boards of statutory bodies. There's a complaint that often that governments tend to to populate these boards with with um, you know, supporters. And therefore then um, maybe there's not objectivity in how um the boards are run. And so again, um, to try and remove that perceived bias. If the recommendation is they should have a recommend, uh, Appointment Commission. Integrity Commission, um, that is currently lacking. Provision for Commission Inquiry to, so that at all levels the system can be held to account and persons within the system, right up to the premier, or in the case of independent countries, prime ministers. And for those of you who follow events in the BVI, you know that that there's currently a Commission of Inquiry undergoing. And in fact, this past week, the premier of the BVI, he he was giving testimony. In terms of commissioners, there's a recommendation for a Human Rights Commissioner, Complaints Commissioner, and a Freedom of Information Commissioner. Freedom of Information Commissioner would be very important. If you're gonna have transparency and accountability, it's important that that the general public has access to information. And certainly, the more developed democracies, um, the citizens can can write and request information and on anything except those which are classified as, you know, for security reasons, whatever. And then the governments are duly obligated to respond. Another aspect of standards in public life relates to public finance. And um again, the stewardship of of the public finances is an ongoing um issue, you, if you listen to talk shows or during the various campaigns, elections campaigns invariably one party tends to to criticize the other and and, you know, the switches when when um, when, you know, when when they alternate in power. But you know, tend to to criticize each other and say, well, you you did not manage the the public purse properly, you were imprudent. And so um, there is a section proposed in the constitution, which is modeled after TCI Constitution. And it deals with with value for money, as I said, transparency. It deals with things like like borrowing, the extent to which you can borrow, the accountability of public officers and so on. And one of the the recommendations is that currently there's a Fiscal Responsibility Act. And and the recommendation is that um that be replaced with a new act to be negotiated and agreed. And um, the current Fiscal Responsibility Act is actually now almost um is actually now almost, it was, it was implemented, passed in 2013. So it's almost ten years. So, yeah, it's, it's probably would be sensible to, to review it. Interestingly, in Section 129, there's a provision which allows for the governor to ensure that, that what is provided for in, in Part 10, that, that be upheld. That's not in the TCI Constitution. So we should find out why. It's felt that that should be included in Angola's constitution. So that's a question for the Britishmen when they come back for discussions, negotiations. Financial services. The negotiating teams, negotiations were held with the UK government in 2019. And one of the proposals was that financial services should be returned to, as a devolved responsibility to the elected officials, to the ministers. And it's my understanding that previously the government of Angola did have responsibility for offshore finance, financial services. But that was given up. I have no idea why. But financial services is, is very, is very successful, very important for BVI and Cayman Islands and Bermuda. They, they generate a lot of revenue from it. The BVI, for example, generates around 200 million US dollars per annum in revenue. Whereas from financial services here, government of Angola gets about 5 million US dollars per annum. So I don't know if we missed the boat on that one. But that's, that's a big, that's a big discrepancy. But apparently in the negotiations which were held in November 2019, the UK government was not too keen on returning that responsibility to the government of Angola. So that's a lesson first, I guess. Be careful what you give away. Powers of the governor. The powers of the governor down the line in the various constitutions that have been in play in, in Angola, in effect, have remained the same and in some instances have, have, you know, have been embellished. The UK government has taken a strong view that since they have their, their signatory to various treaties and obligations, that they must ensure that they are upheld. And also the question of contingent liabilities, since the territories, be it, you know, if they were to go bankrupt, for example, they are, the UK government is obligated to provide financial assistance which comes from the UK taxpayer. The UK government is of the view that they must be able to preempt such things from happening. And, and they should have the power to act unilaterally if needs be. So you would see that throughout the Constitution, the various areas where the governor has the power to act unilaterally. And then even on top of that, the UK Secretary of State has further powers which they can overturn, things that the governor may have signed on to, and so on. So democracy to a certain degree. Looking at executive. So the Constitution provides that executive authority should reside and vested in Her Majesty, who is represented in Angola by, by a governor. And that there should be a cabinet. Right now it's known as Executive Council. And that the governor should chair the cabinet. But in terms of voting members, it should consist of the premier renamed from Chief Minister and now more than five other ministers and two ex-official members and the persons of the Attorney General and Deputy Governor, who should not have a vote. There is an extensive section in the Constitution dealing with what is called protection of fundamental rights and freedoms. And this relates to treaties that the UK government is signatory to and also treaties that the government of Angola is signatory to. And an example of where this applies is protection of the right to marry. And this, this subject is, as was with the negotiations and discussions in 2019, has generated a lot of discussion here in Angola. And the UK government would like to see a language which, which would allow for, for no limitation as such. I'm just, I'm paraphrasing. In terms of who can marry. And, and currently in Angola's context, marriage is between persons of the opposite sex. And the UK is maintaining that the various conventions, for example, the European Convention of Human Rights does not allow discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation. And so therefore, this should also flow true to the right in terms of who should marry or who can marry. Question of independence. That has been raised and that was raised in the 2019 negotiations. And the question is posed, should the Constitution have a clause that would allow to trigger pathway to independence? The UK government responded that the Angola Constitution is built on the Angola Constitutional Order of 1980 and Act. And, and that provides, that allows Angulans to opt for independence if that's the majority will. In terms of the amendments that were made in 2019, there were three and I would have referred to a couple of them. So just quickly, so we've gone from, there's been renaming of the position of leader of government business from, from Chief Minister to Premier. There's also been a provision for election on an island-wide basis. And there's been amendment to allow for the grant of Angola status if your grandchild or great-grandchild of a person born in Angola, who has Angola status. So to conclude, do you, the general public, think that the proposed changes satisfy the demand for increased democracy? Do you think that the proposed changes satisfy the demand for improved standards in public life? And are there any other principles of note or provisions which you would like to see reflected in the revised Constitution? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Harrigan. I just want to acknowledge, since we spoke last, I just want to acknowledge that quite a number of persons have joined us. I just want to welcome our ministerial assistant in the Ministry of Finance, Mr. Gordon Morton, tonight. We also have with us the chairpersons of the Angulization Council and the Angola Economic Association and quite a few others, members of the clergy, but just this evening, we do welcome a number of other members of the public. The floor is now open for your questions, comments, interventions. We ask that you come to the microphone in front here to make your presentations. Don't be shy, this is last night. Everyone here, from as many of you as possible. John Harrigan. Gerald Harrigan, please.
Official publications, I don't know if there were any official publications out there. But it's good to be here nonetheless for the, the final session. As I was listening to Dr. Harrigan's presentation, there are a couple of things that I would like to highlight and agree on and even make one or two suggestions. And one is that regarding, regarding to the, the House of Assembly, the Constitution of the House of Assembly and in particular, the, the Speaker of the House, I am in full agreement with the, with the, with the proposal that the speaker should not be aligned with a party. And as far as is possible that the speaker be chosen from, from, in a democratic sense and from the general populace of the country, where for the most part, or if, if at all, that it would not be involved or aligned with a party. Because this would add to the democracy of the, that we are talking about in the House of Assembly. And that's one point I would like, I would like to see happen. And also, in, down the same line of democracy with the Constitution of the, of the House and the districts in particular. I, in, in your presentation, you mentioned two options. One, that the district remain as it is. The districts, the, the appropriation of the districts remain as it is, or it be increased to nine districts. However, I know I heard about a proposal of one district. I, I think there were other proposals as well. But I am supportive of the one district. Because I think this, above all else, lends to the, the idea of democracy. The, the exercise or the, the election exercise that we had last, our last election, where there was at large or island-wide candidates. I think the general public was very much appreciative of this. And to see this happening in, on an island-wide scale or general scale where there's only one district and all of us can choose from a slate of candidates generally, rather than having the districts as it is now or as it is proposed to be, rather than having districts where, where people are easily influenced by the family members in the district, for instance, or people that they know closely in the district. And the votes or the, the election for that particular candidate is swung by, by the, the familiarity, as it were, of people within the district. And then the whole country have to live with that for five years. I think it's a dis, a disservice to the, to the population at large. And I think it will, Angola will be served much better if there's one district and we choose our candidates. All of us are able to vote for at-large candidates, as it were, from, from the one district. And finally, the, the point of marriage. I stand here to support the biblical view of marriage. And as, as it, as it is being proposed in the Constitution going forward, we don't see the biblical view of marriage being upheld. Why biblical? Because God, the Creator, he is the architect of everything that we, he's the architect of everything that exists. He is, he has given the mandate for life. He has given his word, which is the, which is the manual for us to live by. And it is plain for us to see that, that there is an Almighty Being that is in charge and in control of everything. And I think if we try to ignore that in any respect at all, even with regards to what is expected of him in marriage, I think we will be going down the wrong, the wrong path in life as a country. And I, I don't think we can follow any other, any other path or any other example of other countries in disobeying what the Word of God says. The, God's Word tells us in Genesis 2:24, "Therefore shall a man leave his father or mother, a man leaving his father or mother and be joined to his wife, and they shall be one flesh." Here we have a male leaving his father and mother and joining to his female partner, his wife, and becoming one flesh. That is also, it's not only founded in Genesis, but it's also echoed in Matthew 19:5, Mark 10:7, and Ephesians 5:31. So throughout the scripture, it is upheld throughout God's order for mankind and order for Angola as part of mankind. This principle is upheld. Genesis 1:27 also says, "God made them male and female." So I'm, I'm here to stand also in support of the Angola Evangelical Association's proposal, where it says, it is, it is proposed in, it is proposed in a petition that is, that is circulated right now that the Angola Constitution should state that every man and woman of marriageable age has the right to marry one person of the opposite biological sex. We believe that's what the Constitution should say and should uphold with this singleness of, of marriage between two people and male and female. Any other way will be Any other way will be contrary to the laws of God, and it will be an affront to what God expects of us as a country. And I would like to see, and we, I believe, most of us in Anguilla, who uphold Christian principles, would like to see this type of inclusion in the constitution of Anguilla. Thank you so much.
Thank you Pastor Gerald Harrigan for your intervention. The floor is open. While we are waiting for someone else to come up, just remind you that this is the final in this series of town hall meetings. And following this, we will be collating the various views expressed over the many weeks. And then we will be sharing them with the Constitutional and Electoral Reform Committee. And that will be followed by an exercise, where we have set up a small drafting committee from the AG's chambers, and it includes a member of the clergy, as well as another individual. So it's a small committee that will put all of these various aspects into our new draft. Because what we are awaiting from right now is a draft that would have been prepared by the British, which incorporated the views expressed by Anguillians, the views expressed by the British, and in many cases, compromised views, which sought to sort of provide a balance between what we were saying and what they were saying. So that is where we are moving. This coming Saturday, we are slated to have a session with Aponee in New York, Mr. Carlson Connor. So we're going to be meeting with a wide range of Anguillians in the diaspora on Saturday evening. And thinking ahead as well, we are hoping to engage with our youth parliament in putting together a sitting of the youth parliament to discuss same-sex marriage, as well as, we are also going to be inviting them to come back out into the districts to engage with young people in particular this time, on the various aspects of the draft constitution. So all of that still lies ahead. And we continue to invite your comments, your questions, communicate with us. So, anyone else who'd like to raise a question? Okay, I see that Pastor Philip. Okay, so we have Pastor Dwayne Adams. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Good evening to all. I just wanted to come this evening and add my voice to this very important discussion. I want to start by commending the Constitutional Electoral Reform Committee on the work that they have been doing, which I can only imagine is both joyful and, at the same time, very taxing. But it needs to be done, and I do appreciate the fact that the general Anguillian public has been given an opportunity to give their input, because indeed, the will of the people is necessary. The will of the people is important if they must abide on the laws that are being drafted. Those laws should not come simply from the intelligentsia of the nation, but they should be reflective of the will of the people. As a Christian, as a believer in my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, I am far more interested in the will of God. I am interested in the will of people. But the will of God, as expressed in the Holy Bible, is everlasting, is eternal, is unchanging, whereas the will of man, I find to be fickle. One day it's this, the other day it's the next. I may not be the oldest in the room, but I am old enough to remember when, as a student in the high school, I sat under many of the thinkers of that time, whether they were Christian or Rastafarian. And it was clearly expressed that we, though we be a small nation, we have the right, and we must fight for and hold on to self-determination. We cannot let the greater powers, though they... It was a popular term in that time called "third-world nations." Though they may call us third-world nations and call themselves first-world nations, you are not third-world citizens. And I remember, it didn't matter so much the faith, you know? I can call names on the Rastafarian side and names on the Christian side, but this is what was told to the students. And I sat there as a 12-year-old, a 13, 14-year-old, listening to them, and believed it, that even though Anguilla was the little 35 square mile, we could determine our future. Well, some of those people have passed on. But here it is, and I speak about the will of man being fickle. Here it is, in my lifetime, that we are giving serious consideration to certain issues, and there are many issues that I agree with. I think the document is coming along fine. But the issue in particular of gay marriage, we are giving this serious consideration and making it seem like such a big issue, when in truth, the origins of the issue are not here. It's not in Anguilla. This, when you talk about ideologies, and where they originate, and even besides origin, the force behind them, it's not Anguilla. This is not an Anguillian issue that we are spreading. I will go as far as to say, it's not Caribbean. This is not a Caribbean issue. I don't see Jamaica and other Caribbean nations kicking up for this. I'll go a little beyond Anguilla and the Caribbean. I will say, if we were to trace our roots, and we call ourselves largely an Afro-Caribbean people, this is not even an African issue. Many African nations have been threatened that unless they sign on like us, their aid will be taken away. So where is the origin of this issue? Well, the origin is in nations that, 30 years ago, 35 years ago, I were told, though they call themselves first-world nations, and though they call us third-world nations, you are not third-world citizens. But here it is, we developing nations, we know, call ourselves, is more palatable, are giving, when we look at what's bothering Anguilla, what's hampering Anguilla, what's troubling the souls of our young people, we are giving far greater heft to this issue. That is, my opinion, is not even, I'm not saying it doesn't exist. It's not really our issue. I add my voice to the many Anguillians who have signed petitions, and who are still a God-fearing people, and who say that it is their desire that we follow the outline given to us by our Creator, in that marriage should remain as a sacred union between one man and one woman. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you Pastor Adams. We recognize Ms. Avanella Griffith. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thanks for the opportunity to share. This is an island I love, and I believe God has put me here for a reason, and I want to do everything that I can to ensure that those who come behind us enjoy it as much as we do. Our constitution is not just, I believe, about things we should abide by. I believe it reflects who we are as a people. I think I heard Mr. David Carty say it, and I was like, ah, that's the word I was looking for. Our constitution reflects our culture. It reflects us as a people in our core. Our constitution is our foundation. And I think it's important, I believe all of us, and especially in Anguilla, know that it's important on what you put your foundation. So far, Anguilla has placed its foundation on a lot of godly principles. And we have seen the benefits of such. I believe God has protected us in so many ways. And if it's only if we can see, it's because we have built our lives, our country, on his principles. Over the years, we've been going away from them. We've been getting into things like gambling. And now we see that this mechanism of homosexual marriages is another thing that wants to get in there and to erode our foundation. Tranquility, I believe, is not because we have been very good people, and that we are better than anybody else in this world. But tranquility has been a blessing. I believe that we have been recipients of straight from God, and because we have built our lives, again, mainly on biblical principles. And when I say "we," I'm thinking of our forefathers. We love each other, we help each other. That's what I knew growing up. And even if people chose to live their lives outside of biblical principles, they were never killed, they were never abused. But when it came to our laws, our laws obeyed and were aligned with nature and with the good rulebook. And I fear, and though I don't typically fear, that we are moving our, the trend is to move away, and in doing so, we may end up displeasing the one whose hand has protected us from so many things. We look at going through Irma. Had Irma gone over other countries, it would have probably been horrendous. But not one person in Anguilla died. Had, not had, but COVID has been all over the world. And we saw one death, we've seen one death so far. I'm not saying that that's, you know, always going to be the case, but for what, we have come through so far, and we wonder why. And when we see the rainbows, that should give us an indication of why. There's no other island, and I don't even know of any other country that has as many rainbows as Anguilla. And though homosexuality may tend to want that as a symbol, we need, again, as Pastor Adams said, to go back to the origin of things. And really, the rainbow was given as a sign that when people are extremely wicked, God promised, you know, I'm not going to destroy people like this again. And he gives us that promise in the sky over Anguilla Rainbow City. Context matters, culture matters. And there's a lot of democracy in people choosing, but yet we are facing a situation where we are going to be told that we have to do this because so-and-so. And I think that's very hypocritical. What we put in our constitution is going to make us or break us. And believe it or not, it is what's making and breaking so many countries nowadays. When you step onto Anguilla's land, when you come on the pier, you come on the airport, the peace, the feeling that you feel, it's just not natural. It's a gift that we have to cherish, that we have to protect, and it starts from our foundation, come up. But when we place light with it, and we don't acknowledge it and realize that these little things come together and they knit something bigger, then it can be easily lost. And so, amending and rewording our constitution is just not a casual thing to do, because you're not playing with walls that can be broken down and relaid easily. You're not even playing with the roof, where you can change it. You're playing with foundation. And the foundation, when you're moving it from sand off of rock, the Bible says it's foolish. And we have to ask ourselves, in the aspect of adding in, intentionally adding in something that goes against nature, that goes against the God who created nature, are we being wise? Are we in Anguilla being wise, or are we being foolish? And big countries, first-world countries, colonial managers can say what they want for their country, but is it right that they dictate what happens in our land when we live here with our context? And so, I don't think that we as a people it is not in us to be hurting, to be going about killing as in some countries homosexual people. But when we come to making certain things our law, and what we stand upon and what we live by, that's a whole nother level. And we are to be very, very careful that we don't go there, because that's a line when crossed can be very dangerous for nations, for generations to come. Not just, the repercussions aren't now, but the repercussions are later. And we in Anguilla have an opportunity. Because we are almost last in this line, the Caribbean region is last in this line, we get to look at the other countries that have done this thing. Our teachers are going to be given books, where families are going to now be nuclear, single-parent. They're then going to be two parents, sorry, two males in a family, three males and one male, two males, two females. And as a teacher, if I refuse to teach such to our nation's children, I don't have a job. With the aggressive agenda of the LGBTQ community, our musicians, who are booked to play gigs for weddings, and then upon arrival, find out that it's a gay marriage, and they decide not to play, they'll be sued. Some pastor may be picked upon, who persons know will deny, refuse to marry gay people. And this pastor will be picked upon, and the push will be there to get them to go to jail. The writing in the constitution is one thing, which I say already should not be. But then the repercussions, and the things which follow, are out of our hands once it's there. Once the foundation is laid, there's only a certain way the blocks can run. Blocks can't run nowhere else after that. And so the livelihood of all our people, when we put things inside of the constitution, is important. And again, when we look around and see what has happened to countries after this has been allowed, it just hasn't stayed there. It has gone on to the next, and to the next, and to the next. And even then, you get to the point of teaching children, kindergarten children, children in grade one, about different sexual practices and other things which you would learn at... at high school or even, and now they have to be forced to be taught certain practices and be told it's okay if you want to change from being a girl to a boy at four, five and six. It is okay, you don't have to, because it doesn't stay where it is now. It snowballs. And a teacher is going to have to be obedient in teaching children at that age. Your sexual identity is fluid. None of you in here are girls, none of you in here are boys. You can choose which one you want to be. And if your parents tell you anything, just come and tell me and I will take it to the social welfare department and I will take it to this person and they will make you leave that house and go and live in our house where you can be whichever sex you want to be, whenever you want to be that. Is that how tranquil Anguilla should be? Is that the tranquility we were blessed with? The tranquility we were blessed with is not going to just stay there and be with us all the time, just like that. We have to protect it. We have to, well, we have to acknowledge it, have to recognize what we have, protect it and cherish it. I believe our taxes should be tranquil, our laws should be tranquil, our traffic should be tranquil. That's because we were given something when we used to criticize how much stuff St. Martin had going on with it, even traffic, as Anguillians. Now we are threatening the same thing. And Anguilla is not going to remain the same because of outside forces, because of inside forces, but we have to decide what is our constitution, what is our foundation going to be built on and then go from there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We have Ossil, and then we have Mr. Morton in the back, yes?
Greetings to everyone viewing us and listening to us, and thanks for the opportunity to say something. And just taking over from the sister there, in addition to what she has been saying, we realized that just earlier this evening, I had an item of news on radio where it was being said that in the UK, 52% of the people believe in marriage. And then it went on to say that there are some who prefer to live together, on our side, we call it shack up, something that I never supported, and to have in our constitution same-sex marriage. I think that we are going contrary to the will of God. The biblical scriptures has been saying it all along, and we've grown up on that. And if this constitution that we are putting forward has to be worked on with the UK, and that is what UK is putting out today, 52%, just take half of the two and you're saying 50/50, okay? And again, sexual orientation. When you, when I read about thing news in other parts of the world, and you are hearing about preschoolers and those other primary school children coming and asking you about certain words that they would have heard, words as the teacher just say, what we would have learned in high school when we do in biology, okay? So we are really frustrating our little ones from down there. So it is no way whether I am representing the people or whoever, am I going along with same-sex marriage? Sometimes when you talk with some young people, you have seen where some of them have been in these kind of conversations already and see it like, it was always there, yes, whatever was there in people's private lives, it was in their private lives. But when you put it in, write in, it make, it's a different kind of thing because people then have to deal with the choices they make, what they did in their private lives and whatnot. And the other thing now, the, as Pastor Jerome was speaking about the democracy and he spoke about the speaker of the House, we know now that everybody has a line where they're going to vote, but it has always been obvious that there have been some people who go to the forefront for everybody to have to know which party they support. And I know it's a problem then because as a union leader, I know there are times when I had to oppose governments, even though I had voted for them. And some of them would say, she's against the government. That was not the point. It was the issue that I was looking at. So sometimes people could look as if they were supportive of a party as well as it's not. But again, when the time comes, we, people will know exactly who to choose and whatnot. And then the other thing, I have to do some more research on whether we should have the one district or stay with our, um, the districts that we have. We have already gone into the island-wide elections and so, you know, but that could be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. While Courtney comes, I just wanted to read a comment online that says, one electoral district like Mansurat, 11 seats, elected speaker, no AG nor DG in the House of Assembly. Districts are gerrymandered and undemocratic. Anguilla is one small contiguous island unlike BVI. One electoral district helps to cut back on old family feuds and hatreds, allows higher caliber of candidates. So thank the online comments. Yes, Mr. Morton?
Good evening. Good evening to our online viewers and listeners, and thank you for the beautiful job you've been doing with this constitutional reform briefings. Tonight, I just want to touch briefly on electoral reform. Earlier, when I was on my way here, you spoke about maintaining the seven districts, in your opinion, and the four at large, and kind of shifting the boundaries to ensure that each district more or less have equal votes and equal representation. And I think that's something that needs to be looked at if you're going to maintain the seven districts and four at large. Because you could see where, for example, a gentleman could get elected in West End with 314 votes and someone could lose a seat in Valley South with 614 votes. So it's very important that if you're going to maintain the seven seats, four at large, we do our best to equalize those districts. And as I touched a little bit on the at-large, the one, the one district, if we do a one district, me personally think that it's a way to get away, we should get away from the party politics and go into the individuals themselves. If you maintain the party politics, then to that one district, you may have to add kind of a governor and a deputy governor, but in all cases, you could have a premier and deputy premier. Because if you don't add to it and kind of more sequence it, you could have a party come into power with, say, seven candidates and the premier in that party comes in with the less among votes of those seven candidates, which doesn't reflect the views of the people. So there's a lot to look at if you're going to the one party system, where you might have to add to it or take away from it. Even in a party environment, it will create problems where you may have premier, like I repeat earlier, the premier coming in with the least votes of those seven elected candidates to form the government. So it's something to look at if you're going to the one party system. I'm not too familiar with the Monstrat system, but I'm just looking at what could occur moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morton. Thank you. I think we have a, okay, we recognize the chairman of the Anguilla Christian Council, Reverend Wilma Hodge.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity again to share in this forum where we express our views regarding to the changes, regarding the changes that are proposed in the Anguilla constitution. And I want to speak this evening about the proposed change that will allow for something other than what is written in the constitution today with regards to marriage. And I want to say that the change that is proposed is not an idea that was conceived in Anguilla. Could that be said? It was something that has been, that has been brought to us, suggested to us in Anguilla. And I believe that if we, the people of Anguilla, want to see our constitution advanced to reflect the, the needs of our people and to address the, the status of our people living in Anguilla, I believe that those ideas should come from the people of Anguilla. I think we have enough persons who are qualified to, to sit and to draw a constitution that benefits us as Anguillians. And anything that is, that is sent down to us as a proposal must be seriously looked at and to see whether or not it infringes on our cultural, spiritual and our values in general as a people. And in saying that, any of us living in Anguilla who this has been suggested to, think about making those changes in order to appease the British government in particular. In order to appease them, we must think again because if we are doing it to appease because of something that we, that we would not get, something that is promised to us that we may not get because we do not conform to what is being proposed, or if we do not confirm that, you know, certain privileges, certain rights, certain things will be taken away from us. Now, I hope that it is not, or that we do not go that route because of appeasement, appeasement. And I want to remind us, I know all of the scriptures that have been used in defense of marriage, but I want to remind us that if we are going to do something just because of what we expect to get in return, even if it means selling our souls, we must consider that seriously. Because the scripture says, what does it profit a man if he gains the whole world and loses his soul? And I think that our protection of the, of the right to marriage between one man and one woman is indeed keeping a part of our soul, something that has been the soul of our Angolan heritage. And so I want to, to say that we must be very careful as to how we go about, about this. And again, I stand with my colleagues in the defense of marriage and has been between one man and one woman. And I hope that the government of Anguilla will also stand on the side of those of us who propose that that remains in the constitution of Anguilla. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Reverend Wilma. While Pastor Philip comes, I just, they come Pastor Philip, while he comes, I just want to reassure you, Reverend Hodge and all the others, that this for us has not been an exercise in frivolness or frivolity or, or a joke. We're taking this thing very, very seriously, and that is why we have taken the time to go to each of the districts. That is why we continue to invite persons to participate, to send in their views. At the end of the day, we want to ensure that as wide a cross-section of persons as possible participate in this exercise and the views of as many persons as possible are reflected in the positions that we take forward when we go to meet with the British sometime next year. So thank you, sir, for intervention. So we give the closing minutes of our evening to Pastor Philip, and I know this is the only thing he will be brief.
How many minutes do I have, honorable sir? Okay, I'll try to speak as quickly as possible. The Anguilla Evangelical Association and the Christian Council will submit in writing our views pertaining to the other aspects of the constitution. Pertaining to the issue of the legalization of gay so-called marriage, I have a PowerPoint that I'm going to show in just a little bit, but one of the first things I want to say is that the legalization of gay so-called marriage will breed a virus and variance of intolerance hitherto unknown amongst us. The learned and highly accomplished retired attorney magistrate judge in September 2016 wrote an article in Angulian entitled Homophobia Runs Rampant in Anguilla. And he said, homophobia is an irrational hatred felt towards homosexual men and women. It is an exaggerated irrational and extreme fear of gay men and lesbian women. It is a mental state most commonly found in backward rural areas and not tolerated among urban and thoughtful persons. It is best viewed as a form of mental illness. So some of us here are mentally ill. Appearing strongest among persons who secretly doubt their own sexuality. In his article filled with scientific inaccuracies and a display of ignorance of the Bible and world history, he made this conclusion. My final curse is this, may those so-called ministers of religion who stop hatred against a minority among us because of the God-given personal sexual preferences burn in hell fire for all eternity. And then his theophobia drove him to declare on hammer earlier this year that in view of COVID-19 pandemic, he would love to give God a slap in the face. After all these unprovoked attacks, this gentleman is able to walk free in Anguilla at any time, day or night, has not been harmed, no risk of any danger to any engagement that he's in because the God that he's intolerant of has given him protection in a truly tolerant society. But to be champion at the same time, the enactment of so-called gay marriage that once enshrined in the constitution, it will murder tolerance, free speech, victimize anyone who even say they love LGBT people, LGBTQ people, but disagree with their lifestyles. So loss of jobs, prosecution in court of law, imprisonment. So this is what we're looking at having introduced through our constitution, a level of intolerance. People can curse God, say they're going to slap God, no harm to them, but if somebody wants to legalize that, if somebody just says, I don't believe two men should marry, they can be taken to court. You can say it as gently as sweetly, you can tell your child, I will not call, you can tell your girl child who has birth at the age of 14, you are not a boy. She can then take you to court and sue, and you can be arrested for being evil. That is the kind of tolerance, intolerance that this legislation is going to bring to us. And we are not speculating because it's happening around the world as we speak. Now let's talk about the drivers of LGBTQ. Alfred Kinsey. Because to know the fruit, you have to know the root. Alfred Kinsey was an American biologist, professor of entomology and zoology and sexologist who in 1947 founded the Institute for Sex Research at Indiana University, now known as the Kinsey Institute for Research in Sex, Gender and Reproduction. Kinsey's research on human sexuality foundational to the field of sexology provoked controversy in the 1940s and 50s. This man's work is quoted as being the authority on sexuality. Very strange, very strange. His work has influenced social and cultural values in the United States as well as internationally. He is seen as the most significant sex researcher in history and is hailed as the father of the sexual revolution. The LGBTQ people, they are his descendants, they are his offspring. The prevalent and emerging views about sex today, including pornography, prostitution, orgasms, incest, homosexuality, lesbianism, spouse swapping, bisexuality, et cetera, are indebted to his efforts. Researchers into Kinsey's methods, which purportedly catalogued normal sexuality, have noted that he loaded the ranks of his test subjects with an inordinately high number of persons imprisoned for sexual deviancy, prostitutes and child molesters, criminals estimated by one researcher as providing as high as one-third of his overall subjects. So what Kinsey said is reflective of society. It was a skewed sample. Most of his test subjects- Most of his test subjects were prostitutes, gay people, pedophiles, and he used them to be representative samples of the entire society. But this is what universities quote from. Kinsey's research esteemed the people quoted as though this man was a prince. Actually, he was a pervert. Kinsey's manipulation extended to his choice of staff. His assistants in his studios were selected from young students, both male and female, who were required prior to coming on board to provide their detailed sexual histories. Another requirement was that they be filmed in explicit sexual movies in his attic. I'm speaking about the father of LGBTQQIP2SA, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, questioning, queer, intersex, pansexual, two-spirit, androgynous, asexual. Actually, there are about 50 genders, so this is just a few of them. No, it's about 75 genders, this is a few. No, it's about 120 genders and they're increasing. Kinsey's research included observation of child sexuality, the manual and oral stimulation of children's genitals, and the timing of children's orgasms with stopwatches. Kinsey had research to show that a child as young as a year old had multiple orgasms. That's a pervert. But he is quoted by the universities as this great man. And his research has driven the emergence of LGBTQ. The father and here are the children. Kinsey's report claims at least 317 preadolescents who were experimented upon by older adults. And confirmation of, of, of at least 2,035 child experimental subjects were later admitted in 1980 by assistants Gebhard and Pomeroy as reported in Ethical Issues in Sex Therapy. Kinsey decreed that within the inner circle, men could have sex with each other, wives would be swapped freely, and wives too would be free to embrace whatever sexual partners they liked. Kinsey himself engaged in various forms of heterosexual and homosexual intercourse with members of the institute staff, including filming various sexual acts in the attic of his home. I'm speaking about the father of the LGBTQQIQ2SA who want to have marriage changed in Angola to be between two men and between two women. This is their father. Kinsey got research, I won't even go into all of this, but because it's just twisted, I will share it on social solutions because of time. Perhaps the most painful reading in the male report is the description of children who supposedly experienced orgasm, a description supplied from adults who had sex with children, describing the children, these are little two-year-old children, three-year-old, groaning, sobbing, or more violent cries, sometimes with an abundance of tears, especially among the children. And Kinsey had this data. Kinsey said, it says his most notorious subject interviewed in 1944 was a sexual omnivore. What's a sexual omnivore? A person who has sex with everything, including dead people. It says his history was one of sexual encounters with men, women, boys, girls, animals, and family members. It took 17 hours to interview the sexual omnivore. Kinsey interviewed a man like that and compiled that into his database to help to drive the sexual revolution. The sexual revolution is what has created the LGBTQ. So when we talk about changing the constitution, you've got to understand what you're dealing with. When you're thinking about a casha tree, when you're thinking about any tree, you've got to look at the roots. And so the roots of this thing go deep. Kinsey said that the only sexual act that is morally wrong is a sexual act that you can't conceive in your mind. I'm going into all of these details for us to understand what we are dealing with. Okay? Now, we refuse to, to fall into the trap of focusing on only gay so-called marriage because what they would like us to do is say, "What? Two people have the right, if they love each other, to marry?" Well, and I don't know, at some point, I would like our esteemed attorney magistrate judge, maybe not tonight, to say publicly, because I brought up last time, to say publicly if he supports the marriage of seven people, or 20, because he cannot champion the marriage of two men because they love each other, and deny five people who are equally human with their desires, with their needs, with their loves, with inherent dignity, and deny five people the right, or 20 people the right, to marry. As I said last week, that is already being done in Somerville, Massachusetts, they already have civil union status. So we are not into conjecture, a red herring, we're talking about actual realities happening as in our world. We don't, so there'll be a loss of parental rights, indoctrination of our children. When we talk about gay marriage, gay so-called marriage, you have to ask, you have to say, "We will be losing our rights as parents over our children." You cannot say, "Don't teach my child in school about fisting, or rimming, or oral sex, or anal sex." England said, "Parents cannot object and they can't even protest." They can't protest. So parents were protesting in Birmingham outside the school, Britain says, "You cannot protest." Are you serious? You cannot protest? Where in the world do you have a country where people cannot gather publicly to protest your view? This is the intolerance that this legislation will bring to us as a country. Now let me just share the PowerPoint slides quick here. We're going to have girls running. My daughter wants to run. Every year I promised to, to train her how to run. She, she loves sports day, and I never have trained her. But imagine me spending weeks and months and years to train my daughter to run. And then here comes some boys who say they are girls because they identify as females. And according to how it is now, they don't even have to take any hormonal changes because that is hateful. They can just say that they identify as females and they run. Here is this man. Let me go on to slideshow, play from the start. Okay, thank you so much. Let's look at some real-life victims. This is a man, handsome guy and his beautiful daughter. Lives in Canada. His name is Robert Hoogland. Hoogland was arrested. A judge had issued the warrant and said, "Hoogland was in contempt of court after talking about the case in public and calling the child his daughter." His daughter was saying, "I'm a boy." And the father is taken to court because his daughter called the police and said, "My daddy is calling me daughter." And that was a crime. And it's calling me she and not he. That was a crime. That is the tolerance that we are bringing into our country. I'm, I'm shocked that anybody in their right mind can champion that. This is not about two men having the right to marry, or two women. It's bigger than that, it's worse than that. It is insanity coming into the front door, the back door, the middle door. Let me read on. According to Hoogland, his daughter started referring to herself as a male after watching the pro-transgender film Handsome and Majestic at school. At school! Parents can't object, you can't object. It is mandated in Britain. Hoogland, and in Canada too, Hoogland was aghast when his daughter accosted him and told him that she would like to enroll in the seventh grade under a male name rather than her own. Hoogland was indignant, this is a girl who was 11, 10, was indignant of the school officials at the school for backing his daughter's demand and want to, and what to him seemed like a falsehood. He expresses this pleasure with the police but to no avail. To his dismay, Hoogland later discovered that it was the school that started to pressure the girl to change her gender. The school counselor with whom he had met and raised his concerns about his daughter had actually made the change in the yearbook and encouraged the girl to embrace a male identity. Can you imagine an Angolan parent having a, a counselor telling your daughter she's a boy? But this is what this lie is going to do. This is why I vex. And this is why I question the sanity of people who will bring such twisted stuff into our country. According to the British Columbia Sexual Orientation and Gender Identity Regulation, the children's, the child's parents were not informed of the changes. You can give a child an aspirin in school without parental consent, but you can't give a child sex change hormones without the parents knowing. That's insanity. Well, Pastor Gomes, it's in the big world. Well, the big world had slavery too. I mean, slavery was the end thing, but the whole world can be wrong. It was wrong then and it's wrong today. The school went a step further by referring to her with a male name and allowing her to use a male-only bathroom. In fact, Hoogland accused the school of socially transitioning the biologically female child on its own initiative with the input of a gender ideologue psychologist, Dr. Wallace Wall. And here we go. Here's this man, a handsome fellow, he's a doctor. His name is Dr. Macarrett in England. He was sacked because David Macarrett told a panel, "He will not call a six-foot-tall man with beards 'madam.'" And because of that evil crime, he was fired. Forty-six years a medical doctor. That's the tolerance that we are bringing to our country when we allow two men to marry. That is what they call tolerance. You have not seen intolerance. This is taking us back to Hitler's Germany. This is taking us back to Mao's China. This is taking us back to Russia under Stalin, where freedom of speech, of expression, of will, you don't stand a chance. A doctor says, "I will not call a man six feet tall with beards 'miss.'" And for that, fired. Here is what the panel said. "A panel ruled his biblical view of what it is to be male and female incompatible with human dignity. A lack of belief in transgenderism and conscientious objection to transgenderism in our judgment are incompatible with human dignity and conflict with the fundamental rights of others," a judgment said. There are some insane judges in the UK, got a lot of them over there. Here are parents protesting in Birmingham. Look at some placards, "Say no to undermining parental rights and authorities. Say no to promoting of homosexuality and LGBT rights to our life and children." They were protesting. And England passed a law saying, "You can't protest no more." People can protest against the government, they can protest against COVID vaccine, they can protest against taxes, but you can't protest about your own children? Are you crazy? That's our mother country and that's what they want to do here with us? This is not about two men getting the right to marry in court, this ain't about two women, it's worse than that. It's about intolerance of a totally different species. It is Hurricane Irma coming at us at a higher category. Hurricane Irma was a category six, this is category eight, moving up to nine. People protesting in Birmingham. You see this fellow here? The, the one in the dark shirt, that's my son. I tried to find a picture of him by himself, but I was rushing. What they have in their hands are two glasses, that's not wine, we don't drink wine, that's grape juice, or whatever it is that a photographer put in their hands. But that son in the dark suit simply put this picture up in Birmingham. How do I go back on my slide? He simply put that picture up in Birmingham of parents protesting. And for that crime, the school went crazy. You are hateful just for saying, "I agree with those parents." And he was called a hater, he was called homophobic. Are you serious? Are you serious? Are you, listen, okay. So please, let's not fool ourselves about two men and two women, that's nonsense. So the other face is you, me. When this law passes, if it does, we will be arrested or we'll be sued, the pants off of us, lose our jobs, because somebody will use the constitution to vent their intolerance against us. You don't take pictures of me for my wedding? Oh, you are homophobic. Oh, you don't want to play music? Ah-ha, you're homophobic. So, and it goes on and on. So let me just try to, to wrap this up now. That's enough of the PowerPoint and I'm going to just try to land this plane fast. Here's what happened. December 10th, December the 15th, 2010, Columbia University professor David Epstein was charged with incest, accused of carrying on a three-year affair with his adult daughter. ABC News reported, and I quote, "Epstein's liar Matthew Galuso said, 'There is an argument to be made in the Swiss case to let go what hap, what goes on privately in bedrooms. Is it, it's okay for homosexuals to do what they want in their own room,' he said." So how is this different? In other words, if two men can have sex, why can't a father and his daughter have it? Because they love each other? Well, it's a taboo. So who cares about societal taboos? Get rid of that stuff, this is the modern age. Once we go this way, you can't stop anything. And this is why we say we have a petition for the sanctity and the sanity of marriage because what this is bringing to us is pure insanity. Oh, England does it, Spain does it, Portugal does it, Norway does it, yeah, they also did slavery. And Britain hasn't apologized for slavery. Well, they made some official apology after somebody squeezed them by their neck and I must kill them. So they finally squeezed them, but they have not made any kind of, what do you call it? Repatch, what is it now? Reparations for slavery. And they, and then let me say this one here. There's a lie being hammered into our conscious and subconscious minds that Britain is a signatory to international laws and so they have an obligation that is territories. That's a lie. The ECHR, let me read it. Let me read what this says. This is under the right to marry. I'm quoting from the European Court of Human Rights, ECHR. "The court examined for the first time the issue of whether two persons who are of the same sex could claim to have the right to marry in the case of Schalk and Koffwe of Austria and found that Article 12 and found that Article 12 of the convention did not impose an obligation on the respondent states to grant same-sex couples access to marriage. While there was no convention right to same-sex marriage, the court allowed for the possibility that, in accordance with the convention's character as a living instrument, the right to marry enshrined in Article 12 might not in all circumstances be limited to marriage between two persons of the opposite sex. However, as matters stood at the material time, the question whether or not to allow same-sex marriage was left to regulation by the national law of the contracting state. This approach was also upheld in subsequent class." So anybody who jumps around and tells us that Britain is a signatory to the laws passed on by the courts, so they have no choice, that's not true. Go online, look up the European Court of Human Rights and don't let nobody give you a six or a nine. We all can read. And I close out by saying, England and Europe at large are hypocritical when they say they are concerned about human rights. Human rights, my foot. They only recently apologized for slavery. They have been paying the slave masters from 1825 what would be in today's terms, $300 billion for slavery, paying the slave masters for losing their slaves and gave not one cent to the slaves. And they finished paying that debt in 2015, you know what I mean? Every British taxpayer, including black taxpayers, were paying the millionaire descendants of the white slave masters for slavery. And Britain by that were embracing and kissing the faces of the slave masters for every time they lash a black slave, for every time they cut off a slave's heel, for every time they force a black man to rape his own mother and rape his own sister. Britain was in bed with those people. Britain was in bed with those people up until 2015, paying back those millionaire descendants. David Cameron was one of those descendants of the slave masters. And Britain was paying them back, and they say they concerned about human rights. Britain, as I said last week, is a place where pedophilia is rampant. Rampant. And I'm going to share that more on social solutions. There are police who have come clean and say what's happening. And the Chagosians in 1960s, they live in the Chagos Islands, and they were driven out by the British so that the US can have its second-largest naval base in the world there. They live on Mauritius, and in the UK they have no place to live. They have been begging for the right to go back home. The United Nations ruled in their favor. Tony Blair was in power then, they still refused to let them go in. And now they live as refugees in Ma- Mauritius with no rights. And Britain refuses these people their rights. So, when it talks about human rights, I say, please, Britain, go clean up your act. That's hypocrisy. But they're gonna push strange rights of, that are wrapped up with disease. As I said last week, anal sex is 30 times more dangerous than vaginal sex. According to what I was told by a doctor, it is three times more dangerous than smoking. England wants to ban smoking by 2030. Not ban it, but have a smoke-free Britain, because they know it's bad. Anal sex is three times more dangerous. It was said last week that there are many women who are involved in anal sex. Yeah, but at least they got a choice. Gay men, that's all they got. It's a lifestyle that is just tight. Eighty-five percent of, 95% of gay men in, involving, engage in anal sex. So, let's not even conflate that. But the point is, it is still harmful whether it's done by men or women. But in homosexuality, they have no option. That's what they do. So, let us please understand we are dealing with. As I said last week, there's no scientific basis for it, for, um, to prove that a person is born gay. And that is what science says overwhelmingly. A person can try to pluck at a few trials and draw some instances, but you cannot create a principle by exception. Science makes a clear statement. And even if somebody has a natural desire to steal, which is called kleptomania, you do not say, well, fulfill your urges, come into my house and just steal. You say, no, I'm sorry, control your urges, please. I want to thank you gentlemen for the opportunity, and God bless.
Thank you, Pastor Philip. Before we do a brief vote of thanks, I think it's only fair that someone who has been with us from the very beginning of this exercise until tonight, Justice Don Mitchell, we allow you to start us a few closing words.
Thank you, Mr. Minister. I would much rather be talking about the powers of the governor and the importance of the Integrity Commission. But since you told us to come prepared today to talk about gay marriage, I've made a few notes, and with your permission, I'd like to refer to them. And this is what I have to say. The right for gay people to marry is a fundamental human right recognized by dozens of countries around the world. And I am confident that if a poll were taken in Angola, most persons would be in favor of gays and lesbians having the same right to marry as homosexuals. Yet, a vulnerable minority still oppose it. This right is embedded in the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. The UK government is prohibited from allowing a constitution for Angola that is in breach of the Declaration. I refer you to Article 16 in particular. I have some notes on it, but we don't have the time for me to explain what Article 16 says. And then, reference was made to the 1950 European Convention on Human Rights. That Convention extended the rights that are to be recognized beyond those adopted by the United Nations. And on Britain acceding to the European Union and accepting the Convention as part of its own law, the Convention was extended to Angola. Any Angulian law contravening this Convention is illegal. The United States government is prohibited from making any new constitution for Angola that contravenes the Convention. This provides in Article 12 that men and women of marriageable age have the right to marry and to found a family. Note, it doesn't say that men and women are allowed to marry each other. It is universally accepted that this right extends to gay marriage. Article 14 of the same Convention buttresses and supports this right of gays and lesbians by prohibiting discrimination. It says that the enjoyment of the rights and freedoms set forth in this Convention shall be secured without discrimination on any ground such as sex. And it goes on. The right of homosexuals and others to have their marriage recognized is further supported by Article 8, which provides for the right to respect for private and family life. Paragraph 2 explains that there shall be no interference by a public authority with the exercise of this right, such as is necessary in accordance with the law and is necessary in a democratic society in the interest of national security, and so on. Now, many liberal church members in all religions have been outspoken supporters of gay rights. Movements within churches have been aiming for a wider acceptance of gay rights. However, some religious leaders have been accused of sparking hatred and violence by arguing against gay rights. Because of their verbal opposition, some church leaders are guilty of causing suicides, murders, and great suffering for members of the gay and lesbian community. By preaching against gay rights, church leaders have furthered discrimination and vengeance upon the gay community. In addition, by turning away gays and lesbians, some churches have added to the alienation felt by same-sex couples. Now, we can obtain some guidance on how to view the question of gay marriage by looking at what happened in the United States. There, in 2015, in the case of Obergefell against Hodges, the Supreme Court clarified that the right to marry applies with equal force to same-sex couples as it does to opposite-sex couples. It held that the Constitution requires a state to license a marriage between two people of the same sex. In so holding, the court recognized marriage as being an institution of both continuity and change. Recent shifts in public attitudes respecting gay individuals necessarily inform the court's conceptualization of the right to marry. And it was in that judgment that the court recognized that the right to marry is grounded in four principles and traditions. These involve the concepts that, number one, marriage and choosing whom to marry is inherent to individual autonomy. Two, marriage is fundamental to supporting a union of committed individuals. Three, marriage safeguards children and families. And four, marriage is essential to the nation's social order because it is at the heart of many legal benefits. With this in mind, the court found no difference between same and opposite-sex couples with regard to these four central principles. It concluded that a denial of marital recognition to same-sex couples ultimately demeans and stigmatizes those couples and any children of those partnerships. Given this conclusion, the court held that while limiting marriage to opposite-sex couples may once have seemed natural, such a limitation was inconsistent with the right to marriage inherent in the liberty of the person protected by the Constitution. It is my view, and I say this is my view, this is not the view of the Constitution and Electoral Reform Commission, because the subject was not discussed. So, this is my view. It is my view that Angulians ought to embrace the opportunity of the coming new Constitution and ensure that includes language that does not stop gays and lesbians from enjoying the right to marry. In support, I recall the words of the Anglican Archbishop Desmond Tutu. He was the prominent anti-apartheid campaigner. He's a Nobel Prize laureate and chairperson of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. In 1984, speaking about apartheid, he said, apartheid's most blasphemous aspect is that it can make a child of God doubt that he is a child of God. For that reason alone, it deserves to be condemned as a heresy. Now, more than a decade later, he used very similar words to denounce homophobia and heterosexism. He wrote that it was the ultimate blasphemy to make lesbian and gay people doubt whether they truly were children of God and whether their sexuality was part of how they were created by God. After he retired in 1996, he campaigned actively and successfully for the post-apartheid Constitution to be non-discriminatory in relation to marriage. In 2013, he made headlines with a clear and succinct statement that he would rather go to the other place than to a homophobic heaven. All freedom-loving people everywhere would happily join Archbishop Tutu wherever he is going to end up. Now, it is my view that there is not enough Christianity in pastoral purience and Bible belting of some Pharisees to save the soul of a single spiral. Thank you.
Thank you, Justice Mitchell.
What I'd just like to say, should I say one thing? May we in Angola be careful of what we do. Hebrew Stentor One says, "It is a fearful thing to fall into the hands of a living God." Thank you.
Just to say this, as a pastor, I walk with people. I walk with people of all walks of life. I have had a gay young man in my car who's saying, pastor, you shouldn't be driving in a car with me because people know I'm gay. I say, so what, you're a human being? I deal with compassion. I spend hours of my time with people who are broken. He was raped when he was seven years old. And everybody calls him gay and all kind of names. But I saw him as a young man with needs. I, I, I spent, a young lady shared about her lesbian lifestyle and how it began and the pain. As a pastor, I deal and other pastors deal with the raw wounds of society. We know what compassion is. Desmond Tutu does not represent the teachings of the Word of God. He has gone into a heresy of his own. The learned magistrate may quote him, it means nothing to us. He has embraced heresy, apostasy, so be it. That means nothing. That quote is like water, not even water from a dog's back. But we go by the Word of God and we walk with gays and lesbians and show compassion. Our issue here is the activism that is seeking to support our laws. That is true. Thank you.
Thank you. In closing, we would like to thank the Principal of the Albina Lechage Comprehensive School for providing us the opportunity to use this auditorium. We are very thankful to Mr. Gilbert Fleming-Gaff of Titanium Sounds in Angola and his support staff for providing us over the past couple of weeks excellent audio, visual, and streaming for meetings. Give Gaff and his staff a hand, please. We also want to thank the Department of Information Technology, Dites, Radio Angola 95.5 FM, Lloyds Live as well. Want to thank my, and I always call him my able and capable prominent secretary, Dr. Adrian Harrigan, for his marathon work, not only presenting these evenings, but preparing and researching for the various presentations. To my staff at Minister Home Affairs for organizing and facilitating these meetings. And to you, the audience tonight, this was by far the largest audience we've had over these seven weeks. Give yourselves a hand. Thank you. And again, to all our online viewers and those who shared comments, thank you as well. We now close, we hope that you all get home safely, and we, we will keep you informed as to the next steps as we move forward in this process. Thanks again to Don, Mr. Mitchell, for his assistance over these weeks. Thanks to all, good evening and safe drive home. Thank you.